Emily.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I will call this meeting of the Enterprise City Council to order. Let the record show that all members of the council are present with the exception of Councilwoman Rich. Will you please stand with me for our opening prayer and pledge of allegiance? Mayor Cooper will lead us in our opening prayer.
May we pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we want to thank thee for this day and many blessings that thou hast stored upon us as we gather tonight in this meeting, whatever comes out, the betterment of our city, trying to make sure that things are done decent and in order. Lord, bless this city, bless the state and this nation. Give us strength, courage, and understanding. As we move forward, dear Lord, let us be understanding in what we are trying to do is for the good of the order and for our citizens. Lord, we pray this prayer in thy name forever. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
The life of the United States of America, through the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right, council, you should have the agenda that we discussed in the previous work session in front of you. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted.
I move to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted.
Second. Move a motion as second. Is there any further discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now consider the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the council for review, are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion of the city council with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request of the member of the city council. I will now call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Move a motion as second. Is there any further discussion? Let the record show I'll be abstaining due to a conflict with the council. The people will be... All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will not have privilege of the floor, which this part of the meeting is where anyone in attendance tonight who wishes to address the council may do so for three minutes. If there is a public hearing on the agenda for the topic you are concerned with, please wait until that public hearing opens to address the council. If they choose, staff, mayor, and council will respond to your comments during the appointed times later in the meeting. Repetitive, disruptive, and disparaging comments will not be tolerated. If you are found out of order, your privileges can and will be revoked. Does anyone wish to address the council at this time? Yes, sir?
Good evening, y'all. I just want to follow up on my comments about two weeks ago. I want to really thank Mr. Mott and the city's work crew. Apache Drive looks like a whole new place. Even to this very day, there is not a pile of trash there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bench. Anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to staff reports. Are there any staff reports that were unable to be given during our work session? All right, we'll move on to old business, which is the continuation of a public hearing regarding nuisance properties. So, we will now continue the December 17th, 2024 public hearing to hear, consider, and act upon all objections or protests, if any, for the removal of an unsafe building or structure to the extent that it has become a public nuisance at 100 Dixie Drive, apartments 49, 50, 51, and 52. All right, this public hearing is, like I said, now reopened, and we will now hear from Mr. Goldman on his recommendations of how to proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. Just to remind everyone of how, kind of where we are tonight, and what we've done, and where we are. So, at the council's meeting on December 17th, we had a number of resolutions that were proposed for adoption, ordering the demolition of various properties. And the council adopted all of those and ordered demolition on those properties with the exception of four that were tabled to see if there could be any resolution recommended to the council. Those four properties were all, were four apartments that are located at 100 Dixie Drive. And those, I'd like to refer you back to the binders that you were given before the last public hearing. These concern tabs. N, O, P, and Q in your binders. And so, those materials remain on file with the city clerk. We have received an additional objection this afternoon, and additional information from the property owner's attorney. And those have been provided, and I'd ask that the record note that those have been provided to the council. And a copy is also on file with the city clerk, and I ask that they may be made a part of the record for this public hearing. The properties, the four properties at issue, we have not been able to reach a recommendation for the council. And so, I believe it is appropriate to continue with the public hearing at this time. We can go into further specifics about these four properties and think that we should. However, I think it would be most appropriate if you first hear from the property owner, his attorney, anyone with an actual interest in these four properties, that then you open it up for general public comment, and then an opportunity for the city to provide its rebuttal. And then, we should be at a point where it will be our recommendation at that point to close the public hearing and for the council to take action.
All right. Sounds good. So, what we're going to do now is allow the property owners to defend against the claims.
Good evening, council. How are y'all doing?
Evening.
I'm Brian Paul. I'm an attorney in Birmingham. Grew up here in Enterprise. My mom and dad lived here for a long time, and I have the pleasure of representing Keith Lewis. Mr. Lewis is 60 years old, currently lives in Andalusia, was in the IT business for the majority of his career with the consulting business in Montgomery. And in 2021, his mother, who lived in Andalusia, got sick. And like many of us that have had to deal with ailing parents, he had to spend a lot of time dealing with his mother in the Andalusia area. She was in and out of the nursing home in Andalusia, Pensacola, and Montgomery. It took a lot of his time, and he actually stopped his consulting business to care for her. In April of 2022, unit number 50 that we're here about tonight caught fire and burned. There was some demolition work that was done at the unit there to clean things up. As you know, all property owners have a duty to mitigate any damage to a property, not only for insurance reasons, but for just general purposes. And in March of '23, it looks like Mr. Lewis pulled a permit to start some repair work there at the building that houses these four units. Unfortunately, during this time, his mother was still sick. He did not have the time to devote to overseeing the work that was being done. And the contractor that was hired, I believe, was unlicensed and closed up the walls, the sheet rock, so that the city inspector could not inspect the plumbing and the electrical work inside. There was a stop work order issued sometime in the summer of 2023. And then ultimately, his mother passed away in June of, June 17th of 2023. His mom and dad had a lot of property in the rental business in the Andalusia and Wiregrass area. He had a long time working through the probate process, and then ultimately received or was issued letters from the city in, on, I believe it was August 7th of 2024, saying that this process had begun. Mr. Lewis, the letters actually went to the physical property there on Dixie Drive, and then were issued to a residence that he lived, or that he formerly lived at in Montgomery. It took some time for those, those letters to get his attention. He went to see a lawyer in Dothan initially, and then ultimately came to see me at the beginning of December. I wrote y'all a letter on December the 10th outlining sort of a plan of action, which was discussed at the last meeting on the 17th. Mr. Goldman took the position that the plan of action was incomplete. So, we went back to the drawing board, reworked the plan a little bit, and I submitted a more detailed plan to y'all this afternoon. I've had some discussions with Mr. Goldman, both this afternoon or tonight and yesterday afternoon. And it appears to me that he takes exception to the lack of detail in the estimate that we provided for the labor-only work. I tried to beef that up in my letter to you guys outlining the process. Mr. Lewis was, was going to self-perform some of the work that was involved. Obviously, the sheet rock in the building that was put up before the inspector could inspect has got to be taken down so that the city can, can check to make sure everything is up to code. He's willing to do that. And in addition, you know, we spoke with Mr. Goldman, and there were several issues that, that obviously a successful remediation plan needs. One is a Gantt graph showing the progress as it's distributed over time. We've submitted that. We've given you a more detailed explanation of the estimate. He is also, as we agreed to at the last meeting, there is an eight-plex immediately to the right of the building that houses these four units. He owns four of those units. He agreed that the foundation of that building is unreparable and was in agreement to enter into a consent order or the, the resolution that y'all passed on the 17th to demolish those buildings. Mr. Lewis is willing to, to hire somebody to go in and demolish the building so that the city doesn't have to do it. But for those of y'all that have been out there, I, I actually drove through there in, in December, and the parking lot has a number of potholes and needs a lot of work. He is also willing to move along, even though this is not really part of the remediation plan for the particular building. He is willing to sort of be the tip of the spear in, in organizing the various owners that own the various buildings at the unit, at the apartment complex, to try to get that parking lot repaved. So, there are a number of things that, that he's agreed to do to try to repair the building. He wants to repair the building. He is also willing to enter into a written statement of understanding, which I've also put in my letter, that, you know, if the, the repair work is not completed within the time period allowed in the remediation plan, that the building could be torn down. He's aware of that. He fully recognizes that. He understands that the work has to be done in a timely and workmanlike manner. And he's also willing to enter into an indemnification or hold harmless agreement with the city in the event somehow somebody gets out there and gets injured on the property. I can't imagine why they would have any claim against the city. But nevertheless, he's willing to indemnify the city and/or the engineering department, council, whoever he needs to agree to indemnify. He's also willing to maintain pest control, grass, and weed maintenance from this point forward. And then, he's willing to submit evidence of his financial ability to complete the project in the time required. I submitted an email that he sent to me this morning along with my letter. We can get whatever bank statement is necessary to do that. I can put it in affidavit form, whatever pleases the council. But Mr. Lewis has hired me, an attorney in Birmingham, to drive down here to come talk to y'all. And I think that should be evidence in and of itself of how serious he is to want to repair the building. I certainly understand the city and the, and the building department's frustration with the timeline associated with the building from the time of the fire until the time of us being here. I can certainly understand that there's, there's some concern about that. But we're here now, and we mean business, and we'd like to get this thing fixed. As you know, there are a number of people that live out there. There is a need for housing out there, or at least it appears to me. And Mr. Lewis is 60 years old and frankly relies on a lot of these rental properties for his retirement income. This is important to him, and it's important to me, and I would like to see this seen through. So, with that said, I'm willing to answer any questions that anybody may have. I'll do the best to, to get them the answer that I, that I, best I can. But he would like the opportunity to repair his building rather than having a resolution passed seeking its demolition.
Any questions to Mr. Paul at this time? You may mention to the eight-plex, he owns four of those. Those, those are not the issues at hand, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. And the other four units that are in that eight-plex belong to Fidel Nathor, I believe. He lives in Dothan.
Yeah.
But those were...
So, those were taken up at our, at our last meeting, right?
Yes.
So, I guess anything, any arrangements he wants to make to demolish those instead of the city, I guess, need to be made with, with our engineering department?
Correct.
Okay.
This merely, this only, what we're here about tonight only affects units 49 through 52.
That's what...
It's four units. He wants the opportunity to fix them.
Understood. All right. Well, I guess we'll reserve the right to, to follow up with y'all here in a minute.
Okay.
Thank you. So, now we will allow any members of the general public to voice their support or opposition to the complaint, including any specific concerns they feel the council should consider. Yes, sir? Please state, please state your name for the record.
I sure will. My name is Lorenzo Harrison, and I, I come before you today to ask that you move forward with any powers that you all have for the removal of the structures that's listed in the, in, in the agenda tonight. Back in early 1980s, these was one of the nicest set of apartments in Enterprise. They have went down. I don't live on Dixie Drive, but I live off of 27. And I come through, there are lots going through the businesses that locate there in Morgan Square. And the stiness of these and the unsafeness that we know of anything that's not repaired need to be handled as soon as possible. Now, given s, I, I know you, council, councilman and councilwoman, always looking to help the citizens. But one thing you have to look at is how long do you give for a citizen to take care of something? For, for, for something that's been going on, and for me going to bring you some evidence that I'm doing something, I should come to you at this moment and show you what I've done, so you know that I'm going to take care of what I say I can bring to you later to show you what I've done. Whether it might be edged, decided, the, the curve, or anything like that, I could show you some evidence. That way, you would know what, what I am going to do. But I'd just like to come before you at this time and ask that you would move forward in any action that you can to take care of this slightly area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Any other members of the general public? Yes, sir?
Mayor, council, Warren Byron. As a resident of 53 years here in Enterprise, we have done such a great job in the recent years of cleaning up the areas of Enterprise that need cleaning up. And even though there may be a plan in getting this done now, I'd like to see it considered to go ahead and, and demolish. And maybe, I hadn't looked at, I don't know the numbers, but it might be somewhat less, less effective to just go ahead and take it down and start back from ground. If we don't rebuild there, clean the whole area up, move forward. But we've done such a good job with what has become the blight of the city in different areas that I think we need to consider to continue this, this progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byron. Yes, ma'am.
Sylvia Darling Satchel. I live on Dixie Drive. I've been dealing with La Vida Wood and Castle Ridge for the longest. I've been wanting to have La Vida Wood tore down because like it's a eyesore. And now, we're dealing with Castle Ridge with all the apartments there, then like they don't come and do like the yards and nothing like that. I had a chicken come into my yard, you know, in, you know, in my backyard. I had to run him out. He ran back up there to Castle Ridge. And it's, it's not just a chicken. It's just, I mean, it's, it's a eyesore. And I would like to see it tore down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satchel. Any other members of the general public wish to speak to the council this evening on these resolutions? All right, we'll now allow the city's legal counsel and staff to address any points the property owners and the general public brought up. They feel were not adequately addressed in their opening comments.
Can I just say one more thing in rebuttal?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Paul.
You know, I certainly understand the neighborhood's concern about the overall look of the units. But these are four units in the very middle of the apartment complex that you really can't even see from the street. One of the problems you have there are, there are about 10 buildings, 92 units in total. And Mr. Lewis owns not all of them, a little less than half. The units that are located near Dixie Drive, where everybody passes by and can see them, are owned by other individuals. Mr. Lewis is willing to help the city in going to the owners and trying to upgrade not only the parking lot, but the grass and weed control that's out there and the overall appearance of the, the unit. It's hard to corral that many different owners out there. That, that property, as I understand it, was originally built by Billy Cotter when I was a little kid. It's been bought and sold several times, and the units are not, it's, it would be a different story if the apartment complex were owned by one owner. And so, demolishing Mr. Lewis's four units in the middle of the complex is not going to solve the problem of the complex looking bad. Giving him the opportunity to fix the four units in the middle of the complex and allowing him to work with the current owners and trying to force them to clean the place up will benefit the city. If you tear those down, you take away his motive to try to make the place look better. So, thank you all.
Mr. Goldman?
In just a moment, I'd like for you to hear from Barry Mott. But before I do, I, I think it's worth taking a second just to point out that sometimes the best evidence is considering what's missing. And it strikes me very profoundly that you've had three members of the community feel strongly enough about this property to come forward tonight. I've been involved in hundreds of, of hearings on demolitions, and I can't ever recall a property that, that had even three disinterested members of the community come forward. Because it's a lot easier to stay home at the comfort, on the comfort of your couch and not get involved and not speak out. But to me, that's, that's where you look for a public nuisance. And just as impactful is the three citizens you heard from tonight are the missing people in this audience. You heard not only no one other than the property owner come forward and speak in favor of the, these buildings being renovated and remaining, not demolished. But this tip of the spear mentality, he says he will bring the property owners to the city. He didn't even get them here tonight. And if they're not here tonight saying that this is important to their property interest and to their opportunity, that they, that they're ready, that they're willing, that they're able, that they have the funds, that they have a plan, that they have a contract, that they have a contractor to fix the infrastructure, I think that speaks volumes. I think it also speaks volumes that there is a clear admission that the property needs to be remediated. There's no, there's no dispute that it's in a state of public nuisance where we stand tonight. There is, that's why they've presented a plan to try to fix it. There is no doubt that there is a structural problem with the ownership of these properties. And I think Mr. Paul did a very good job of explaining that that is beyond the ability of the property owners who have had possession of this property for, since its inception. You know, this isn't like a condominium where you have a good, a good board who can take assessments and force. I mean, they have, they have a real structural problem. And I'm not talking about just with the buildings, but with their ability to fix their problems. And it has allowed what, what has been described as what was once a nice apartment complex to fall into a state of nuisance. So, I think it's also significant that, you know, I, I think we're all, as Alabamians, sensitive to individual property rights. And it's, it's frankly why it's, it's often difficult. And it's why they call it public service, because it is difficult, these require difficult decisions. But just as, you know, as you weigh the rights... decisions. But just as, you know, as you weigh the rights and the concerns of the property owner who controlled this property and allowed it to be in this state, you also have to weigh the rights of the neighbors, the surrounding community, the safety of your police and fire who have to respond to this property. All of these are factors that weigh upon you, and it's not just about one man, even though he was the only man to show up to say that these buildings should remain. And the sense of, you know, loss of income, I heard very much about loss of income and absolutely nothing about the quality of the life, quality of life for the residents who would actually occupy these apartments, your actual citizens who would reside there. Not once was there an expression of concern for the people who lived there, for the need for housing stock, for other things that might be legitimate concerns. But I also think that that plea for income, while on the one hand, everybody's entitled to make a living, I think is a little disingenuous. Because if this has such a sense of urgency, and from the facts you'll hear in just a moment, this property would not have been allowed to sit and sit and sit in its state of disrepair, with absolutely no action being taken by the property owner, without the city having to begin formal demolition proceedings. So, with that being said, I'd ask Mr. Mott to come forward and to give a little bit more about the current issues that we're dealing with with these four properties. And Mr. Mott, if you can begin with the fire that occurred in April of 2022.
Yeah, thank you, Ben. Before I go into that, I'll just get a little bit of recap. For me, I came to the city in April of '21, so I'm barking on a four-year anniversary being your city engineer, political works director, and one of my duties is building official. And I take that building official very seriously because, as it was stated, there is a need for housing in this community, but I add the word "safe" housing. Safe and efficient housing for not just the people that live in those structures, but for the people around them. And one of the first things I did when I got here with the city was ride around with people, other department heads, the mayor, Jonathan Tollis, our city administrator, some of you. And we drove around and said, "Show me the problems that we have. What are the things that we want to get accomplished?" And on every one of those discussions with all those members, Dixie Drive was always brought up, and we always drove through Dixie Drive. And I've been in a vehicle with some of our police officers where a lot of things that happen, happen in that area of Dixie Drive, in the vicinity of this building, or in the appearance of the front of that building. So, this is not something new for me. This is not something that I bring to you last council meeting or this council meeting. I've been working on this nearly for four years. So, a couple of the facts are true. There was a fire in April of '22. I cite the reason for that fire was faulty wiring, right? The reason that fire occurred was faulty wiring in the building. There was a permit pulled in March of '23, and that was for demolition and remodeling of that structure that was there. I remember having conversations with that remodeling going, because we have faulty wiring, because we have a fire, that raises, that escalates in my mind, a renovation of a project. It's not like you're adding a back porch or you're changing the carpet in your house. We had a major issue. And making sure that we do this correctly, and making sure that we have the inspections that need to be done correctly in a renovation project such as this. In May of '23, one of the code enforcement inspectors that reported to me called me and says, "We have a potential problem." Sorry. Do you have a minute to come out there and look at something? So I jumped in the vehicle. We rode out into this vicinity, and there was contractors working in this building. And from what we could tell from the road, they were doing work inside the buildings and hanging sheet rock and some other stuff. And my code enforcement inspector at the time walked up and said, "Hey, are you a contractor?" Wouldn't talk to us. "Do you speak English?" Shunned us. He went and grabbed all the people out of the building real quick and ran out the door. We come to find out that the contractor was not licensed to do that work. There's always discussion about whether a property owner has the right to maintain and do maintenance on their building, and you do. As a property owner, you can, as long as you have a residential building, you can do maintenance on yourself. But if you were to hire a contractor, it has to be a licensed contractor to do that work. This contractor was not licensed. We tried to communicate with them. They ran out the door. We tried to find out what was going on, and we couldn't. Talking to the city attorney and such as that, we decided the only thing, the only avenue we had was to put a stop work order. So we nailed up, I think there was four or six stop work orders on that, on the front of that railing to stop this project. That was May of '23. Doing my investigation of how we got there, we found out there was no inspections done, even though when you pull the permit, you know, if you're doing electrical work, you know, there's electrical inspections that have to be done. We have to look at the wiring. The wiring has to be certified. It has to be the right size, the right gauge. The connections need to be done properly. There's all kinds of code requirements that the contractor or homeowner should do to make it code compliant. Also due to the fact that we have a fire, and if over 50% of the building has to be touched, it has to be brought up to code because it's a major renovation at that point. None of that had been done. We had not received any plans. While it's not required to have construction plans by an engineer and architect for a residential building, that had not been submitted. We had not had communications with the property owner about this is my plan to do it. We just happened to roll through, checking on projects, saw the situation that was going on, and the only avenue we had was to put a stop work order at the time. So what happened since then? That was May of '23. I'll tell you, we've had several conversations with Mr. Lewis, Assistant Director Thomas Hardy. He would be here tonight, but he's got the flu. I asked him, "Please don't come, you know, stay home." But he and I talked fairly regular on issues like this, if not weekly. And he's had multiple conversations with Mr. Lewis on this property. And our concerns still are the same. The renovations that need to be done on that building to bring it up to compliance, need to be done by a professional. They need to be looked at. It needs to be safe. The inspections need to be done. The sheet rock that's hung needs to come off the wall. And while we've had several conversations, nothing's been done since May of '23. Now, you can say that we've had a stop work order on the project, but, you know, coming to our office and coming up with a mitigation plan, we've been open to doing anything to get this project back underway, but nothing's been done. And really, no sense of urgency has happened until the last, I'd say, 30 days since December of the 17th. I'll tell you that I've tried diligently to work with all the property owners in Dixie Drive. They are correct. The roads are in bad shape. It's fragmented ownership. I can tell you, it's nearly impossible to get those property owners together to come up with a plan that they would fund to do it. Now, if you said, "Barry, how do you come up with a plan?" I'd say, "It's pretty easy. Give me a couple hours at my desk. I can come up with a plan on how to redo the roads. It's pretty straightforward. I can give you a chart. I can give you costs. I can give you everything you need to get forward." The problem is gonna be is how do you pay for it? We have this issue throughout the city where we have fragmented ownership for different buildings that are in the same complex to get all those people to come to the same place and be willing to pay their portion of the roads that are there. Getting the people together is not the problem. Getting them to commit to pay for it is a completely different issue. But I'll tell you this. I've reviewed the letter that came in today, and I appreciate the effort that was put into this. But I draw on my nearly 30 years of professional engineer and doing construction projects for a multitude of communities and clients through the years. To me, in my opinion, this is still incomplete. There is an estimate done, but the estimate's a one-page estimate and is very vague. You know, $4,500 per unit price for four apartments, $18,000. Repaint the exterior walls, that's the extent of an estimate for the cost. Exhibit B is a Gantt chart. We're renovating City Hall, as you know. The Gantt chart I have for City Hall, just moving furniture in, is about 18 times as more complex just to move the furniture in. Exhibit C was an email with some potential stuff on there, but the little, the sheet behind Exhibit C is, calls out like, install three windows, install siding glass doors. So it looks like someone took the time to go through and look at by apartment what has to be done. It's very light. I'm gonna try to read some of it to you. Prep unit for painting, paint, install blinds, replace interior doors where needed, install a toilet, install vanity, install the doors, install flooring. I'll point out things like, back in the Gantt chart, just install the HVAC. I can tell you, total cost of $22,000 to do everything and do AC for four units, even if that's material cost, I don't think it's realistic. I don't think the plan is complete, in my opinion, for a renovation project of this magnitude. I'll also add, as just a final comment, me nor Thomas Hardy in the engineering department has had one conversation with a professional engineer, with a professional licensed architect, with a licensed contractor, with anybody that has specialty in a field like HVAC or electrical or sprinkler systems or anything like that. We've had no conversation with anybody about this problem or this project or this building. So, I wanted to give you a little bit of quick history, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, sir. But that's a quick rundown of the history of this project and my knowledge of that.
Any questions for Mr. Mott?
Before you sit, I have one other thing I'd like just to confirm, which was, we were told, after the last meeting, concern was raised about an active sewage leak on the campus of these apartments. It was addressed with the property owners. I've been told in the last day that by the attorney that the sewage has been addressed, but again, there's no documentation of that. There's no, there was certainly, and I just wanted Mr. Mott to confirm, this was nothing that they consulted with the city about in terms of asking you to come out, evaluate the fix, look at the work that was being done, see if it was done by someone who had a permit or a license.
So, just to be clear, this is in a residential, I'm sorry, in a complex like this, the sewer system in this complex is private, which is not uncommon to have, you know, four units, private sewer to a point where it comes into a right-of-way and then it becomes city sewer at that point. So, the fact that it's private's not uncommon. And the property owner can go in there and fix private sewage on his own, you know, to do it that a way.
And when you say private, it's still tapping into our sewer system, right?
Yes, correct. It's just like having a house. And to make it more simple, if you have a house, you have the toilets connect to one lateral, and one lateral comes out, and at some point at the right-of-way, it basically converts over into the city sewer. And it's the city sewer up to the right-of-way point. But anything at the right-of-way point to the house is the property owner's. So, this is just a more complex version of that. There's four units here. They have private sewer there. We were told that the sewer has been fixed. Prior to whatever remediation was done for the sewer, I have not been involved. I've talked to Thomas. He was not involved. I've reached out to our sewer crew. They were not involved. We don't know what the fix was. I would have hoped that in a situation like this, as sensitive as this problem has become, that they would have overcommunicated. This is what, we have a sewer problem. Barry, this is what we're gonna do. Just wanna make sure. If I was a property owner and you were gonna do something to my house, I'd be like, "This is what I'm gonna do. I wanna make sure this is gonna take care of the problem. Do you wanna come out here and see it? What's the inspections?" I would have, you know, we'd have some communication. We've had no communication with Mr. Lewis or his contractor or whoever did the work. We were just told the problem is solved. So, I just wanna say that.
Does that require a permit?
Not to do work on your private property, on your private sewer line. It does not require a permit, no, sir. And it could be, it could be thought of as, there was a permit pulled in '23 for demolition and remodeling at that point, whether that would have covered it or not. But if you had a sewer leak at your house, you wouldn't pull a permit with the city to fix a lateral coming to the house. So it doesn't necessarily require a permit, but at least communication in this case. That's one of the things that was cited. It was an item, a point of contention for one of the reasons why this building needed to be condemned, in my opinion, was we had sewer issues there. But I've had no communication about what the remediation was.
And then the next four units next to it has their own private stuff that connects in.
To a point that it connects to the city sewer line, and then it becomes city sewage at that point, yes, sir.
Like all the other apartments, the other...
Very common, yes, sir.
All right. And also, just to confirm, are you still, do you still stand behind your specific findings in each of the lisbendons that were issued for these four units?
That's correct. I still stand by.
All right. And is it your opinion that these units are substantially damaged or decayed or deteriorated from their original value or structure, not including the value of the land?
That's correct.
And is it your opinion that the units cannot be reasonably repaired within a reasonable time and at a reasonable cost relative to the value of the structure so that it will no longer exist in violation of the terms of the ordinance?
That's correct.
And is it your recommendation and finding that the units and that the building should be unsafe to the extent that they are a public nuisance and due to be demolished?
Absolutely.
Thank you. At this time, we'd recommend that the public hearing be closed and that the council adopt the four resolutions ordering demolition.
All right. Mr. Goldman, it looks like Mr. Paul is requesting to speak. Would it be your recommendation to let him?
Mr. Townsend, yes, I am. There are a lot of things that were raised here.
All right. Any objections to allow Mr. Paul to address this?
No.
Go ahead, Mr. Paul.
A lot of things raised here. I'm gonna be brief. You guys are public servants. I get that. If there's anybody in this room that understands a public servant's role in this county, it's me. My father was the sheriff of this county. My grandfather was the district attorney and the circuit judge in this county and Pike County. And my great-grandfather was the sheriff of Coffee County. I'm the first Paul in three generations not to go into public service. I certainly understand the commitment and the hard decision that y'all have to make. However, there is one thing that I can assure you that will happen if these four units are demolished. You have heard from three of the citizens of the city. You've heard from the building official, and you've probably heard from the police department, that this apartment complex is an eyesore. Mr. Lewis is willing to take a lead to help reduce the problem there at the unit. If all four of these units, which are in the middle of the complex, which are not really visible from the road, are demolished, I can assure you, nothing will be done out there to correct the overall appearance of the facility. What we're asking, well, let me back up. One of the problems with being an attorney is when you get into a case, a lot of times you can't do anything about what's occurred prior to. I can do something and can help going forward. My client is ready, willing, and able to repair the building. Mr. Mott said that it can't be repaired in a reasonable time, at a reasonable cost, according to his opinion. All I'm asking for you is to give my client the chance. One thing this council could do is pass a resolution for demolition, subject to a remediation agreement that I could enter into the city. And if my client doesn't complete the remediation in either a workmanlike manner or a timely manner, y'all could tear it down. We would also be willing to enter into a tolling agreement. As I understand it, once this initial process is kicked off, there's 120-day period in which y'all have to pass a resolution seeking the demolition, and then the city has 180 days or six months to effect the demolition. We could enter into a tolling agreement to let him have a reasonable amount of time to try to fix the problem. One thing that I did want to address is, yes, the apartment complex, as I've heard tonight, has probably been a problem for some time. They have recently changed management companies out there, and they have a new management company in charge. and they have a new management company in charge. They're working to keep the place clean, keep it as less of an eyesore. And then, one of the other things that I wanted to address is this sewer issue. Everybody's exactly right, this is a private sewer up until it hits the public connection. The problem with the sewer that Mr. Goldman raised, I had not heard of until the night of the 17th, after this meeting was over with, was raised to me that night. I didn't know anything else about it. It was in the back of the apartment complex, which is nowhere near the building that houses these four units. I told the property manager that it needed to be addressed, and the property was, the sewer system was jetted either the next day or the day after. I could get the estimate and prove it. I didn't know this was going to be an issue because it's not really related to these four units. But that sewer system was stopped up with grease and had to be jetted. That was handled. I don't think there was any reason to pull a permit or involve the city to jet a sewer line, a private sewer line. As far as the estimate, I know Mr. Mott took exception to the amount of the estimate. I think I was pretty clear in my letter that it's a labor-only estimate, and that amount could change depending on what the city inspectors require. The estimate that was provided is a one-page estimate, and the contractor that provided it is a contractor, he's not an English major. He's not going to write you a novel. I've probably taken up too much of your time. But that labor-only estimate didn't involve the HVAC. Mr. Lewis has taken the state's HVAC exam and passed it. He was planning to handle most of that work himself. So I agree, the estimate is not a lot, it's $22,000, but it's a labor-only. And I think it's pretty clear that Mr. Lewis was going to self-perform part of the work and that he was going to provide the materials. So with that, all I would ask is, is Mr. Lewis be given a opportunity to repair his property. I believe that we could fashion a resolution in a manner that would give him the opportunity to do it. If he can't meet the terms of the remediation agreement, the city could tear it down. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
May I have the opportunity for a very brief rebuttal?
Yes, sir.
And that is just to say that on this, Mr. Lewis, in the letter that he sent to us, told us that he owned about 40 of the 100 units at this property. And so far, we've dealt with 12 of those. And so if he's saying, if he doesn't get his way, that there will never be any cleanup of that property, I think that tells you a little bit about how he views his ownership of his other 26 units. And that speaks to it. It's the lack of communication speaks to it. And the reason why we are not recommending a remediation agreement, there are three items, and I've addressed these early on with Mr. Paul, which is why he's speaking to them, but they show the deficiencies. There are three items you really would need to evaluate a remediation agreement. The first is, is it technically feasible? And the problem is, we don't have a complete plan. You heard from your building official that in the case of a fire like this, and particularly where you had an unlicensed contractor coming in, doing work, covering things up, you'd like some sort of structural evaluation, you'd like some other things to give you some confidence in the plan. I have seen many contractors' estimates. This is the thinnest one I have ever seen on a project. The second is, can it be done in a reasonable amount of time? And you heard the citizens speak to how long this has gone on. You heard Mr. Mott speak to how long this sat unaddressed until this was pushed by the city. And yet, how much longer they would need to do the work, if they had a plan, which they don't have a complete plan tonight. So if it's technically feasible, can be done in a reasonable amount of time, which I think neither one of those does. The third is, does the owner have funds on hand to accomplish the work in the time required? And I, you know, always am very respectful of people's finances. And we try to just, sometimes it could just be a letter from the bank saying there's sufficient funds. But we can't even evaluate a letter from a bank because we haven't been given a complete budget for this project. You know, we've been told that the $22,000 is only for labor, but we've not been told what the material cost would be. We haven't been told about what a reasonable budget for this project would be in total. And so the failing of each one of those items is why I cannot recommend a remediation agreement. And unfortunately, there comes a time when it's just time to make a decision. And I think we gave additional time to see if those additional points could be addressed. We still have big holes in each one of those items.